Hey, today being June 15, 2016, Planning Board will open up for the fourth of the night. We've got some bills to pay. We have a telegram, a ZEP bill for $600, petty cash for postage, $35.98. We have three invoices from Graves Engineering, three totaling $4,519.35. The invoices are all included. We have a vendor bill from Williams Scanlon. This is for the Affordable Housing Study. Alan, if you just want to...
Yes, briefly, that's the Bay Pass study. His latest bill for some of the work completed is $3,300. And we're just drawing it down as we planned from the beginning from three different accounts. Part of it is Planning Board Planning Studies account, part of it is Planning Board Mapping account, because it's map-related, and part of it is our expense and equipment accounts. And the fourth one for some of the grant money is out of the town accountant's grant account that'll be reimbursed from the state. That totals 3,300.
And the last bill is from Ready Refresh. It's, um, the invoices are included. Do I have a motion to accept the bills as written?
So moved.
Second.
On your behalf.
Aye.
We've got some correspondence here. Um, from Graves Engineering for June 14th. It's for, uh, the flooded mini golf on Route 20. Basically, there was like four items we were asking them to touch base on, and the four items have been acknowledged by Graves Engineering as completed. We have a correspondent from Dominic Determle. It's for the Mass Work Application Assistance. As you might be aware, the state recently released its 2016 Mass Work Infrastructure Program. Um, it's just, it's, um... Not really sure what that means.
Yeah, it's a notice. There are six different economic development infrastructure funding programs that the state puts under Mass Works. They consolidated them a few years ago, and it's just from CMRPC, the notice that the current round is open. Uh, there's nothing there for us to focus on the moment. A few of them, we're not eligible, and the others, you would have to have a project that specifically needs the funding at the moment, and none of our projects either need it or are looking for that type of resource. But I just wanted to give it to the board, just to be made aware that the latest round is there.
We've got another report here from Graves Engineering for June 2nd. It's in regards to 53 City Depot Road Facility. Uh, EGI on-site to inspect the progress of construction of a 2.5 milliwatt ground-mounted photo-array facility. Um, GGI observed the following. Mr. Adark mentioned some fence changes that are being proposed as requested by the landowner. The changes would shift the permanent fence such that the access driveway remains outside of the fence to allow the landowner, undertakers access to the rare portion of the property. The gates would also be re-located along with knockbox. This is indicated. Plan will be submitted upon this change. Um...
Sorry about that.
This is something we'll address later?
Yes, um, they'll put together a field revision for upcoming meeting on your agenda for that adjustment.
Uh, Town of Leston's only Board of Appeals, a certificate decision on a special permit June 1st. It was for 42 Turman Road, Cherry Valley, for a limited frontage lot by Kerry Scola. Um, it was approved for a limited frontage. Uh, Town Spencer, old public area on the Planning Board, on July 19th, 2016, on the following item stated, stated subdivision modification applicant ZPT Energy Solar LLC, owners of James Nancy located at Holmes Street, Sunset Lane, Spencer. The applicant is requesting revision of the application subdivision originally approved in 2006, accompanying the elimination of the dead-end cul-de-sac on Sunset Lane. The property is located with the subdivision residential, so it's only district, just the public area. Um, basically, if you have anything small we could address, Alan?
Sure, uh, we have an A and R. If I can grab it for one second. Blair Builders submitted an A and R to make two revisions to the Dresser Hills subdivision. One of them, I'm pleased to point out, is the revision we've talked about in the past of, at the request of the Greater Worcester Land Trust that is taking the open space, moving the access easement. If you remember when we approved the plan originally, the idea, the access easement for the Greater Worcester Land Trust to receive an easement that would allow them to get back and forth to take care of the open space and access it was along here. They were concerned that the house being designed for that site and the driveway location would eventually cause them to have possible conflicts with whoever owns the house. Uh, and it makes sense. So we met a few times, and Greater Worcester Land Trust and Blair Builders both were in agreement that moving it over there, so it's partly on the edge of each of those two lots, uh, lots three and four, works perfect with the layout, avoiding any driveways, that type of thing. So on that item, signing this A and R with removing the easement here and putting it over there will take care of that. The second item is, they went to the Board of Health for a well for this lot, and the Board of Health said that the best location is right there, so they're jogging the lot line, so the well will be on the property. So it's just a slight jogging. It doesn't create any problems with zoning for lot width or lot requirements, so this A and R will achieve both of those design changes.
Is it that somebody drilled a well to the culture lot line?
Yeah.
Is it going to happen? I think it's not. Yeah. Is the easement width the same as what it would have done over here?
Um, actually, it's about a foot or two wider.
Okay.
Yeah, it was a little narrower over on the edge.
This is all walkable condition?
Yes, yeah, we went back there.
That's cool. I can make the motion again. All those up there?
Aye. We didn't get a text from people, did we?
No, I did not.
No?
No, I didn't.
Patty didn't say anything to us.
We'll be all set for that public area.
We'll be all set for site plan, but not for special permits.
Hmm.
Yeah, we have a site plan review for Treehouse, fine, because it's to permits, but lots are special, and they did not cancel us. We expected five people here tonight, and we need four.
Wait for her to shoot through the text.
Okay, send it. No, maybe she's just out in traffic, because she commutes last time. Yeah, I didn't get, I checked my emails, just before the meeting or something.
It's like the one that would have a problem with...
Yeah. Uh, no, because those are both site plan votes to mid-moment.
Biggest one's just Treehouse.
Yeah, the special permit side of it.
Yep.
The site plan, you get three votes, fine. Now, see, under the State Zoning Revision Reform Act, special permits will be down to three votes, not four. So it's one of the, one of the goals of the upcoming revision bill. I'll give you an update tonight on, uh...
No, thanks. Okay, thank you, we appreciate it. Okay, bye-bye. She's on.
She's on, right?
Okay, all right.
Yeah, four votes. Fine.
Thank you.
Yeah. I'm gonna tell them they're rocking two votes. Although they're not, they're rocking, no, no.
Getting nervous. Thank you.
Um, I'll just introduce Dan, Dan Dinesker, as we've talked about Dan, and thank you for taking the time tonight.
My pleasure.
Dan is the, um, Staff Planning Director for the program Complete Streets in Central Mass. He's been very helpful. I had a good meeting with him when he first started the effort, and he was kind enough to suggest that he come in tonight. And, um, I've told him, you know, where our interest is with the Village District, and that we did get in the budget for the next fiscal year, such July 1st, $10,000 for design.
Okay.
And Graves Engineering, our consultant, will work with us on that.
Right.
So we've got that as, you know, match and do that side of it. But, um, I'll just shut up, and, um, if you want to brief the board, we've got another member or two who will be here soon, but if they get here too late, we can catch them up.
Okay.
Thanks.
Well, thanks for having me. Um, the Complete Streets program is put out by the state this year, and there's funding available for, there's different tiers. So the first tier is passing a policy, and that's kind of why I'm here tonight, just an informal discussion to see where the town is, where you'd like to go, how I can help you with drafting a policy or making any changes to it. Um, and what it boils down to is it unlocks a pool of money for the town to possibly be eligible for. So the second tier of the program is you can apply for up to $50,000 to have technical assistance to either pay myself through CMRPC or an outside consultant to do a prioritization plan. So you look at all the roads in town, weigh them against the policy that's developed, and you kind of lay out a five-year plan to start that has a minimum number of projects of what you're looking to do. And then the third tier is up to $400,000 to build one of the projects, and that functions, from what I understand, kind of like Chapter 90, so it's not as, uh, labor-intensive as a TIP project. It's a little easier to get through if you have a smaller project. So, um, the first tier, we've met with Alan before talking about developing the policy. The policy, you can really change it to, uh, there's an example of the policy we did for Spencer in the back. Uh, you can change it to fit your town however you want. Uh, I've worked with Barry and Mendon now, and everyone's policy is basically the same, but just a little different to make it context-sensitive. Um, we really want to work so the town doesn't set itself up to have to do things that it doesn't want to handle in the future. So if you have roads in the village center that look different than they would in outlying neighborhood or a really rural road, that just doesn't make sense. So you don't want to back yourself into a corner. And it doesn't mean all the streets need to look like a canal district in Worcester with sidewalks and bike lanes and parking. It could just be, uh, a sidewalk on one side of the road. It can be wider shoulders that are signed saying, "Bikes and pedestrians can walk along it," so you can kind of keep the character of the town, and it's not all urbanized, so to speak. Um, so I'm here just to answer any questions you might have. There's an outline. There is a couple pages of frequently asked questions. Um, and usually what we've been doing is, I can work up a draft with Alan and then can come back if you'd like, and we kind of walk through it and talk through the different sections. Because what will happen is when you develop a policy, you submit it to Mastot's portal and it'll grade it, and you need to receive an 85 to pass on to the second tier. Um, it's not really that difficult to do. Uh, Spencer scored an 85. Barry actually scored an 98, bonus points. You get bonus points for, uh, signing a community compact if you pick Complete Streets to be a focus area that gives you bonus points.
Yeah, yeah.
Um, and I believe you, you attended the training, so that...
Yeah, I went to the...
Checks that box off.
The district free training.
Yes. So as long as a town official has attended the training, that's good for that check mark for the first tier.
I brought it up at department head meetings, and the town administrator brought up the community compact elements, so I think that would get us some points too, because we are...
Sure, I believe that's five bonus points. But as long as you have an 85, you're good to go.
Um, I've got a question, because I've explained it to the board, and you've given much more detail, because you're more expert at it, about how it's a few steps. It's not just you put in application. You've got to do the certification that you've described, you know?
Right.
Tier classification.
Right.
Um, and what we started with, and they brought it up at the training session, that they said, for instance, Charlton has the Village District plan.
Mm-hmm.
We were flattered about it. But what you're saying is that we probably step on and work with you on what you have on this handout, um, beyond the policy, which is simple to draft up and, you know, all that. But the Complete Streets prioritization, prioritization plan would be a little more town-wide than just the Village District, or...
I would strongly suggest that, just so you don't limit yourself in the future and you think, you might want sidewalks everywhere in town, but maybe regional bicycle connectivity. Uh, there's a big push now from the feds about tourism, so you could have people coming through town that want to stop, get something to eat or whatever on bike, and hit to other towns, um, things like the brewery coming to town, or, uh, we know people ride bikes up 31 and 169, things like that. And you'd want to think about maybe working in Crossing 20 as kind of a barrier for that type of connectivity. Uh, so I wouldn't limit it just to the village center. You could have things written into it that have an extra layer of focus on the village center, but you never know 10 years down the road. You may want to do something somewhere else in town that you'd like to be prepared for just to have that pool of money possibly available.
How time-consuming is it to create that type of law plan?
Well, I actually just got the signed contract back from Mastot today for Spencer, so we're anticipating, well, we wanted to start at the first of this month, and it should be done by August 15th. And just to give you an idea, for Spencer, they have a pretty significant downtown sidewalk betterment plan already, so that kind of cuts down on our work on the front end, um, and it's about $12,600 what we're charging to do that. And you, that doesn't come out of your pocket, that's part of that up to $50,000.
But that's tier two.
Right.
The first step, and it's very new to us, the first step tier one is, we can work with you in drafting up, using Spencer as a model for a, um, a Complete Streets policy that the Planning Board will review and recommend to the selectmen to adopt.
Sure.
And then, um, a letter of intent goes with that, and I can then go on?
Well, actually, you don't have to do that if you're doing the policy.
Okay.
The letter of intent is another option if you feel you're not ready to do the policy at this point, but in my opinion, it's easier just to go ahead and do the policy.
So we get the policy done and finalized, and I've already done the training, then we can go right into the portal to get the tier one approval?
Sure. Yep, you can sign up as the municipal official, submit that there. Uh, their Complete Streets engineer, Lou Rubito, just left Mastot, so there may be a little delay in...
I remember him from the training.
...scoring. Um, but normally it's been two to four weeks turnaround time for the scoring that they'll get back to, and they'll provide feedback if things are missing.
So I don't see why we couldn't, our next planning move is July 15th. We could have a proposed Charlton policy statement for the board to review that night and finalize and forward to the selectmen. Not too long after that, they could approve it, late July or early August type thing, and then we're good for a tier one portal supplemental?
Yes.
Yeah. So by the end of the summer, we'd be moving to tier two. Now, when we look for the technical assistance from you and the funding, are we applying to them or to Central Mass for that?
Um, how it works in Spencer is I filled out all of the application forms and so gave it to them to submit. So you're the, the contact between the portal. I can't sign up for the portal.
Okay.
Um, and then there's the usual back and forth with the contracting process. So there'd be a contract between CMRPC and the town, and then between Mastot and the town.
That makes sense, you know, that's good steps. And then, after we get that assistance, we work with you to complete the Streets prioritization plan, submit it to them. And on a parallel track though, the board had talked about, as we get deeper into the summer, our focus when we get to tier three, we're actually asking for the money, is, you know, to have a design package of proposed village center sidewalks. Um, I was talking to the Economic Development Commission at their meeting last week, and they're enthusiastic to work with the Planning Board, and they mentioned also some crosswalk locations and all that type of thing.
Sure.
And like you mentioned signage and such.
Yeah, there's a lot of low-cost things that are eligible in the program.
And Jerry Foskey would have been here tonight. He's enthusiastic, our highways superintendent, but he's got a project in the field that is actually out there right now.
Okay, that's, that's key to have.
So we can on our, on a parallel track on our own, initiate this summer, the Planning Board, Graves Engineering, and Jerry, um, identifying locations in the Village District and designing. We can actually, once July 1st hits, we've got the fundings for the designs, we can keep working on that while we work with you on...
Sure, and that, that could fold right into a tier two project if you were looking to do that in the fall sometime.
Sure.
And the funding in the program right now is for this year and the next fiscal year, but there's 50 million set aside in the capital improvement program to continue it.
Sounds great. Sounds like Alan's got some homework to do. What's all the results in sidewalks?
Yeah.
I guess I can hit the ground initially and draft up and run it by you for your, your editing and feedback, uh, the initial Complete Streets policy.
Sure.
I did give the Planning Board the, prior to today, you gave me Spencer, Littleton, and one other. I can't remember what came out. I gave it to the board, so they've seen that prior too. But I agree with you, Spencer looks like a good template that I can work on to draft a Charlton one, work with you, and get it back to the Planning Board for July 13th.
Sure, and I can send you Barry's too, because they almost got a perfect score, so...
We should use Barry's instead of this. Why not?
Find it for place, search for place.
Right.
Larry listens to this, huh?
He does.
In terms of him helping, that's what I meant, working.
Some of the boroughs, I'm sure.
Oh, yeah, two of them wrote it. I know that, you know, there's a lot of funding in the bond bill, but there isn't statewide a lot of funding year to year, but hopefully, you know, it'll be spread around and...
Right, and I think this helps for future TIP projects. We have the Transportation Alternatives Program in that, which is focused on Complete Streets type things, so it certainly would help if you're developing a larger TIP project to have all of this as supporting documentation.
Great. I've seen this for Dana.
No? Awesome, great. Thank you.
Thanks for having me.
Thanks for coming.
So I'll talk to you real soon.
Sounds good.
And, um, we'll pencil in on July 13th. I don't think you have to come back for what's...
That's fine.
...about the policy.
Yeah.
And then, um, we'll just keep taking it month to month.
Great, excellent. Thanks again.
Thank you, great night, you too. Thank you for coming in.
Thank you.
Yeah, he really knows the program. I think that'll work out well. He's already helped out three communities, and he said if he came out here, he'd like us to be in the next group of about four or five communities.
Oh, okay, perfect.
We'd be looking to put sidewalks through the Village District and things like that, right?
Yeah, basically, um, sidewalks, and they'll pay for a few smaller things, like, they can pay for crosswalks, either existing or no. Like you said, some signage. Uh, even if you wanted to add a bike lane somewhere, they'll pay for the adjustments on that type of thing.
It's good.
But I think the main priority that you expressed is the main piece of it is sidewalks, but you can do these other pieces that are related to bikes and crossing streets and signage and intermodalism, that type of thing.
What about bike racks?
There's a different bike rack program, um, that they sent out recently from Central Mass for public buildings, and the selectmen received it. And because it's more public building, you know, it's their bailiwick, because it's wider general government. Um, I didn't see anything that would prevent you in this, but I think that when, if DOT reviewed an application for Complete Streets with bike racks, they'd probably say, "Why don't you get the racks from the other pool?" Just because there's limited money.
Right. Makes sense. Not being quite 30, 735, do you have anything smaller involved?
Yes, um, I can go over a few items from my list. Um, just an update on the cell tower flags.
Yeah.
Yeah. Um, I've been talking with Mitch West lately, who SBA owns the flag on Route 20, which is based in Florida, and I work with Diane Borsher, actual, um, urban planner who works for them out of Florida, and she assigned last year Mitch West, the local person, to be their maintenance guy. So he called me back the other day, and he said he was a little disturbed in that they didn't do anything. He thinks there was a vandalism situation. He said, "We've had nobody out there to take the flag down." And when he, one of his staff went out there the other day, not only can they not find the flag anywhere, but the rope of the lanyard is gone.
Oh, gosh.
And he said, "Even though it's locked and such, somebody got in there and something happened." So he said, "It's just going to take a little extra time." Like, he, he thought that maybe someone took it down because the flag was broken, and he'd get a crane out there in the next week or two. He said, "It might take me up to a month, because now I got to figure out what broke, and I have to double-check on a flag order." But he's working on it. And, but he was very disturbed. He said, um, he asked me if I would check with Sabrina Webb at the bank for, um, whether any of the security cameras showed that site, and if so, he would talk to her about going through some of their video.
Is there like a rope that goes up through the middle of it, for them to lower it and raise it?
It's like a wire, isn't it? It's not like a regular rope, right? It's pretty...
Like a cable.
He calls it the rope, but it's more like a cable.
Cable.
Yeah, because of the height, you need something like that.
And then the lower part of the flag has the big loop to it.
Yeah.
Which slides down the pole, right?
The whole, the whole, the whole connection's missing, he said. There's nothing there, no, no, what he calls no rope, no flag. I told him when we first talked about it a while ago, that maybe if it snapped and broke, the flag might have drifted to the north. But he walked it, or his staffer walked it and said, "They can't find anything."
It's a huge thing.
Which he feels somebody took it.
But the marion is the, the lower part of the flag, right?
Yeah.
So that would slide down...
Down, around the pole.
Down the pole.
Slide down, yeah.
How would anybody want that?
I said, "Do you think it's a miscommunication and someone in your company did something you're not aware of?" He said, "Absolutely not, I've checked into this." He said, "We're disturbed," and that's why, he said, "Who could I talk to at the bank that may have some surveillance?" So I said, "I'd be glad to talk to Sabrina for you." You know, but at least he's on it, you know? I also told him that you and I had both looked at the clam box, and he said he sent one of his people out to double-check it, and if it's what you and I say it is, he'll get that one in the pipeline. He just has to check to see whether he has a backup flag already, or he's got to order one from a manufacturer, which could take a month, type of thing. But he's on top of both of them at least. Um, a couple other items. Um, I mentioned briefly that zero-point development is really going to hit the ground this summer on pulling building permits and doing their, a group of their next projects, at least six, if not eight of them. So we've been having pre-construction meetings the past week, and Mike Andre will write up starting next week for each project, an individual pre-construction, um, report summary that I'll attach to a notice to proceed to Kurt for building permit. So anywhere from six to eight of them this summer, zero-point is going to hit the ground of the next pool that you already approved.
They haven't built anything over on...
Yeah, I think that's, that's definitely part of this group.
But now they're, they've got their strridge tore up. Not right there, yeah, down near street over...
Yeah, from Massey. Up to the deep.
Mary Devlin talked to me today from the selectmen's office. Tarek Markowski, his business schedule is just not allowing him to stay as a delegate, one of the three town delegates to Central Mass Regional Planning. So she asked me if I would bring up tonight if the Planning Board had any ideas for a replacement. You're the Planning Board delegate appointed by the Planning Board, but, um, she said they were looking for a recommendation from us. You don't have to give it this evening unless, whether it's a board member that wants to do it or somebody you know.
Who would they try to...
Uh, Tarek, he...
Tarek.
Yeah, he, um, she shared with me an email from him that with his business schedule, he just can't continue... that I'll attach to a notice to proceed to Kurt for building permit. So anywhere from six to eight of them this summer, Zero Point is going to hit the ground of the next pool that you already approved.
They haven't built anything over on...
Yeah, I think that's definitely part of this group.
But now they're, they've got their storage tore up. Not right there, yeah, down near street.
Yeah, from Osgood. Up to the deep.
Mary Devlin talked to me today from the Selectmen's office. Tarek Markowski, his business schedule is just not allowing him to stay as a delegate, one of the three-town delegates to Central Rast Regional Planning. So she asked me if I would bring up tonight if the planning board had any ideas for a replacement. You're the planning board delegate appointed by the planning board, but she said they were looking for a recommendation from us. You don't have to give it this evening unless, whether it's a board member that wants to do it or somebody you know.
Who would they try to...
Tarek. Yeah, he, she shared with me an email from him that with his business schedule, he just can't continue right now, and so if she could find a replacement, he requested it. So whether it's a board member, in the past, you've had up to all three of them, planning board members, doesn't have to be. It's two appointed by Selectmen, one appointed by planning board, so you're the planning board appointee, if you want to give it some thought. Think Rich Kair might want some? He went to a CMIPC meeting, they invited Economic Development Commissions in from around the region, and he worked hard and participated and represented us on that about two weeks ago.
Yeah, might bounce it off.
I could ask them.
Yeah.
Because it's quarterly, right? Your commitment?
Yes, they're just quarterly. It's four meetings. And we just had the one, the one in June is the annual meeting. That's a different site every year, all the other ones are down at the station.
Sure. So if you think of anybody else, though, you know, but I'll also reach out to him. We've got a few more minutes. Just to keep it in the loop, and I won't state publicly the congregation, because they didn't give me permission, but I did have a meeting with a gentleman yesterday who represents a church that is looking at a parcel of land in town for potentially buying it, optioning it, buying it, and building a church for the congregation. And I went over that site plan review is required, and I explained all of that, and so if it does move forward, I'll keep the board in the loop, and he'll eventually apply. But it's all early stages of looking at land and that type of thing. We're at the end of the fiscal year, June 30th, and you've signed some bills tonight. Jane and I are on top of, as we are every June, wrapping up our line items, so we're in good shape. And a few other things, I'm looking at the clock at the time. As you know, in September and October, we do the annual planning board goals and objectives, and also an annual review by Graves of our subdivision regs, to see if there's anything you should tweak or not in the subdivision regs. Some years you do, other years he just says he has nothing to recommend on changing. So time flies, you know, just to let you know that in a few months, we'll be adding that to the agendas. And just a reminder again that at the moment, we'll add meetings if we need it, but at the moment here, summer schedule beyond this evening is Wednesday, July 13th, and Wednesday, August 10th. They asked if I would just make the request for them. You've got two ongoing site plan reviews that you held at your last meeting. The OMA group is the site plan for, across from CVS, the self-storage commercial, and Bruce and Cheryl McKissick's site plan for their truck repair, vehicle impound, and used car. The engineers for both of them had asked to be continued to this evening, and then each engineer, within three or four days, recontacted me and said, given their workloads, they'd like to continue this evening to July 13th. They just have to work on the stormwater management. So at their request, I'm passing on that request for, I would do two separate motions, one for each project, to continue to Wednesday, July 13th.
Do I have a motion to continue the OMA group to July 13th?
So moved. Second.
Aye. Do I have a motion to move the McKissick site plan application to continue to public hearing to July 13th?
So moved. Okay.
Aye.
Thank you.
Continue the public hearing? Ah, yes. Just want to introduce, some board members know Mark. Mark Bobowski is the attorney representing the applicant. He's been before the planning board in the past. Some members who are more recent weren't here at the time, and he'll be before us again, be on the Zoom.
Thanks for the introduction. Are you ready for us?
Yes. If I can just summarize for the record where we are, and then, it's the second night of the combined hearings for site plan and special permit, and I think it's been going very well. I think we all agree, and it's time to wrap up this evening. Pardon me, let me grab a sheet. What I suggest, we have four areas to go over tonight before closing the hearing and heading to a consideration. The first one, very brief, and then I'll defer to Mark in a few minutes on an item. I just want to give the board, as the first item, two very good articles from the Telegraph. One written by somebody in the room regarding the project. So the first one is from Debbie, and the second one was Aaron Nicodemos' column for May 15th in the Business section of the Sunday Telegraph. Second item, I'd like to defer to Mark in a minute on what he just handed out, which is finalizing the restrictive covenant for the open space. Then when we're done with that, what we'd like to do is, I'll summarize the peer review for Graves, and then we have a waiver request on one design item that we're recommending, Michael and I, and we can go over that fourth. And then I think we'll be in good shape at that point to close the hearing and deliberate for conditions of approval. But if I can turn it over to Mark, if you want to explain what you just handed out and what the restrictive covenant on the open space is about, it's all yours.
Sure, thanks, Alan, and thanks for the introduction. My office is in Concord, and I'm pleased to be able to come tonight. I was in Indonesia the last time you met, and I hear Adam did a good job. The section that governs these planned business developments talks about a restriction on open space, which is required. I think your requirement is 25% if I'm not mistaken.
Yes.
So I've chosen to do a restriction, which is in the form of a covenant, instead of deed to the Conservation Commission or to a nonprofit preservation trust, for two reasons. Number one, I don't think the town is in the business of accepting the land any longer, which many towns have taken that position. And secondly, with regard to the nonprofit trust, they're in the business now of asking you for quite a bit of money, which I think is, sometimes that's a good idea, but in this case, I don't think it's terribly useful. You'll see the open space restricted land on the plan that I've attached, which is labeled Exhibit A. Can you remind me what the acreage is of the open space? If you can see it.
17 acres.
Okay, oh, there it is. 17.12 acres, it looks like to me, which is 25%. So the restrictive covenant is allowed in the zoning options that we've been provided, and this would be something enforced by the planning board. And it's basically a covenant, an encumbrance on the land, and it says that the land which is subject to the restriction will only be used for exclusively agricultural, horticultural, educational, or recreational purposes. It shall be maintained by Land Row Realty. If this were going to be a condominium association or a subdivision, you'd put a home association together to do the maintenance, but we only have one adjacent land in a manner which will ensure suitability for intended purposes. So Land Row will take on the job of maintaining the open space. I had inquired whether or not something would be used in the open space. Sometimes you want to put a trail through, but nobody's reported anything in that regard. I'm told that there will be some agricultural activities, like growing hops perhaps.
Correct.
So that fits within the agricultural limitation. We don't have the property in the name of Land Row yet. That will take place...
Friday.
Fairly recent, or fairly soon. So once Land Row gets title to it and their deed is recorded, I can fill in some of these things that are blank right now. I would never record a restrictive covenant on my property until I have the special permit in hand and the appeal period has expired. If something blows up, you don't want to have an encumbrance on your property that was unnecessary. So as a board, I would suggest that you require as a condition that the restrictive covenant in substantially this form be executed and recorded at the Worcester Registry of Deeds prior to the issuance of the Certificate of Occupancy.
That's exactly what we do on others. Sure.
That would be my approach to this. And I did, I xed out, if you can see, and shall grant the town an easement for this purpose, because that's a separate vote of town meeting that requires a two-thirds majority. And you can come, we're promising that you can come on the property. If we don't maintain it, you can maintain it. You don't need an easement to do that. You have permission as a result of this restriction.
We've done this in the cluster special permit for the residential. And you're right, we didn't include that provision in those. Those didn't go to town.
No, I just xed it out because it was in your bylaw, and I didn't want to think I missed it.
No, I did review it with Mark and went over a few language items that we, together, adjusted a few little routine language items, but in terms of what he presented and what he's put together, I think it's excellent. It's exactly what the planning board would require and need.
Can we have any type of report from Graves Engineering?
Not on this, no. This is just, this is a non-civil engineering item, and again, you've done this on the residential special permits. For, I mean, Reindeer Estates is one that comes to mind, and you've done it on Blair Builders on a few of them. So this one just happens to be for a non-residential project. And I completely agree with Mark that, and one of the conditions I drafted for your consideration this evening says exactly what he said, that prior to the issuance of a certificate of occupancy, it will be filed at the Registry of Deeds. The planning board doesn't have to sign it and execute it.
It's their covenant. The planning board is named as the beneficiary.
Sure.
So you don't have to sign it if you're getting a gift, and that's what this essentially amounts to.
You'll provide us with signed copies and stamped or receipt from the registry?
Absolutely. It'll have, we need to record the deed to Land Row, we need to record the special permit and the site plan approval, then that'll have a booking page, and those will be referred to in this document. Then we'll let the appeal period expire, then we'll record this document, and we'll give you a copy of all three of those.
And I did go over with Todd Girard, the conservation agent, who confirmed exactly what Mark said, that, you know, the Conservation Commission, the past several years, is not looking for the alternative of owning and maintaining open space. They appreciate the goal of other forms of doing it without them having to add to their limited resource restriction plans.
Now, Land Row, really, they're going to be the owners of the entire piece of property.
Yes, including the restricted open space.
Okay.
Now, your bylaw says that the people who are in the overall land in which, from which the open space has been carved down, have to maintain it, and it anticipates that there will be multiple players, but here there's only one, so it makes it a lot easier.
So by them, with the open space requirement, by them just maintaining it, and then hopefully, as things go on, they might grow some hops on it?
Maybe.
Yeah, there's a very small portion of it. We've left a substantial area up in the top corner for our hop fields. What really we'd like to do is just have a great working relationship with Cape and Hill Sanctuary there, and they're all on board 100%, just to connect the kind of piece of the property in a nice, kind of a bypass kind of way. So all of our people can visit the Bird Sanctuary and vice versa.
So we're involved in a restrictive covenant in our policy?
Yeah, there's a condition of the way we've just talked about that will be part of your approval. We can move to the third of the four items. Third item, and I'll summarize as briefly and simply as possible, is the peer review report from Graves on the revisions. And again, I want to thank David and Chris for all the work that they've been doing on this. Expedited and kept everything going for a very large project with a lot of design details. So first, give me one moment, I just want to pass around to the board, dated yesterday, June 14th, Mike Andrade's final peer review report. Jane, a copy for you, a few others. I know you've got it, David, but here's a few more copies for the applicant's team. There you go. And I can summarize briefly. There are 43 items, and we're down to just a handful, which I can recommend in a moment, but I want to go into a few details, that we have a condition, which we do with many of site plans and special permits, that prior to the issuance of a building permit, we'll get four copies from the engineer that will give us these revisions. Mike will take one more look, and I can certify to the building commissioner that they're done. And I'll just mention the 12 items. I'll go very briefly through them. Item number two is just a labeling item, just suggesting on one page they ask to label. Item number four, I'll come back to as our fourth and final item. The planning board has the authority to finalize a buffer design under this section of the zoning bylaw that I'd like to go back to. The remaining 10 items, and I'll just name them briefly for you. Number 13, number 18, number 25, number 27, number 30, number 31. 36B, not 36A, that's all complete, but 36B, number 40, and finally, number 44. Those are 10 items pertaining to the design of the stormwater management hydrology, and I'm not belittling anything, they're minor. What they are is, a few of them are just adding some labeling information. A few of them are revising some, the pipe size of some of the drainage relating to the retention and the hydrology. Mike's recommending either recalculating or adding some information on the flow modeling in a few of the areas for the stormwater management hydrology, and in a few places, specifying some valve or outlet details or profiles that are mentioned, but he just needs a little more detail on the profile sheet, that type of thing. So if you look at all of those, it's nothing, and I went over very carefully with Michael, nothing that leads us to another round of this. What we can do is, when I give you the draft conditions later in this, after the hearing is closed for your deliberation this evening, I drafted a condition, as you've seen in others, that the board is attaching the June 14th Graves report, and those following items that we've just listed, prior to the issuance of the building permit, David will give us four copies of a revision, and Michael can review, sign off, and I can certify to the building commissioner. We're in good shape. Fourth and finally, I just want to go back to, Michael points out item number four, which we were aware of anyway. We have a request, and let me briefly explain it, and I'll let David answer any specific questions, or anybody else from the applicant's team, and I'll give you a handout related to it. I've got a three-page handout for you on it, but I'll explain it incredibly briefly. It's not a complicated item. The board, under this section of the bylaw, the Flexible Business Development Special Permit, finalizes if there's a budding land that's owned residential, a buffer, and it's a distance buffer on clearing. And initially, you'll see on page one, Jane highlighted in yellow for you at the bottom, in this section of the zoning bylaw for Flexible Business Development Special Permit, the buffer area, and I'll read it briefly, of 100 feet shall be provided at the perimeter of the property if it abuts residentially zoned properties. Where land abutting the site is a subject of a permanent restriction for conservation or recreation, which we have here, the buffer can be reduced to at least 50 feet. And if you look at the third page, David, on behalf of his client, put together that request, that on behalf of them, they're asking for a reduction to some degree from the 100-foot buffer downward, and he explains it. So you have in front of you, so you can visualize it, you've got the map that Mark just pointed out. If you can turn to the map, David, if you can take one minute to explain to the board specifically what you're asking, and Graves Engineering and I do recommend it, and I can give you a few reasons in a few moments why we're recommending it, but I'd just like him to go over the details so the board fully visualizes what you're voting on as a waiver request when we get to deliberation.
The area question where the 50-foot reduction is requested is, you can see this little stretch right here, near where the building is. In order, based on where the building was sited, this area here, we have to clear a little bit of land for grading purposes. The building itself will be 100 feet away from the property line, and once it's finished, that will remain landscaped and vegetated, but for construction, we need to disturb that area. This is a little bigger blow-up of that area in question here. You can see this is the 50-foot, this is the property line, and really, this area in here will be used, it's really just a sort of corner right here, will be used for grading and the landscape and grass, when some projects finished.
So from the green line to the yellow line would still be vegetation, right?
Correct. Yeah, that's the understood.
Now, one point that Mike Andrade and I wanted to make is, one of the goals for setting the initial 100 feet, and then you can adjust it, is if residential development was existing with dense... was existing with dense neighborhood or a house nearby, you've got residential land abutting it, but they're very large undeveloped parcels. I mean, they're very natural vegetation. So you don't have a scenario that you're going closer to somebody's home or anything. It's very undeveloped and I think we're in good shape on that.
Are there any plans to plant any vegetation where the, on the slope for the grader?
I'm actually in the grading plan. At this point, this area is sort of a, it would be like a two, three to one slope around that corner here. So, and this is sort of access around the building in the back. So this is sort of limited area to plant.
All right.
Okay, I got you. He allows Eric Dawson.
That's all there is to it.
Question through the board to Attorney Bobowski. With this type of thing, what we usually do is, we vote during the conditions as a condition of a waiver as opposed to just when we review it. So when we go through the conditions, unless you have a reason to, procedure will do it otherwise.
Well, as long as it's mentioned in your decision, I'm satisfied with it.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Any other conditions that we should maybe review it?
No, those are our items. I think we're in great shape. If the board wants to consider a motion to close the hearing and enter deliberation, just if you could mention that during deliberation, you don't take any more testimony or questions from the audience?
Okay. We don't need to ask the audience, but you put it this time.
Unless you want to.
And anybody in the audience wish to make a comment? There's a motion to close the public hearing.
So moved.
Oh, okay.
Aye.
As we discussed the first night of the hearing, just to explain procedure, the, to expedite, we had the combined notice and we held the hearings concurrently. But we have two permits we're voting on. The first is administrative site plan review, and the second is the flexible business development special permit. With smaller projects, you don't have a handout during deliberation, but this is larger, like the Conover project, like the Overlook project. So what I did is I drafted up and I'd like to hand out and walk through it. And first, a draft with potential conditions for the administrative site plan review and vote, and then we will move on to the special permit. Jane, keep one there. And, one to you, Damian, David, and Mark.
Yep.
Thank you. Again, Jane and I will review it in the next day or so if there's some factual, you know, we'll double-check factual all. But I'd like to go right to the proposed conditions of approval, and there are 10 of them. There are no surprises. If there was anything that had to be ironed out, I would have spoken to David or Mark prior to tonight to go over anything. And actually, in the special permit, I did go over a few of them with Attorney Bobowski, but that's in the special permit. The first one is your standard condition that the site plan approval is valid for two years only, which means all work proposed and the application is completed within two years from the date of approval. An extension of time can be requested in writing prior to the completion date and granted on a planning board agenda. And you put that in every single permit for 20 years now, so that's a first routine one. The second proposed draft condition for your consideration, prior to the issuance of a building permit, the applicant will receive a note, a written notice to proceed from the planning board or its staff, which will be issued after they have an onsite pre-construction meeting with the applicant, the applicant's engineering rep, the construction contractor, and the planning board's engineer, Graves Engineering. And as McClure Engineering knows, though they've done it many times, Mike Andrade will, within a day of that meeting, write me a quick report that I'll attach to a letter to the building commissioner and CC the application team, that the planning board greenlights the issuance of the building permit. They had that first walkthrough heading into site. The third one is the planning board and building commissioner's policy that no certificate of occupation, occupancy or operation, temporary or permanent, will be issued for any site plan or special permit prior to the planning board signing off and initialing or signing the actual certificate. As you know, Kurt brought that up, we had a meeting a few years ago, requesting that we sign off the way other departments sign off. So that's routine and it's just memorialized in this. The fourth one, the planning board reviewed the final Graves Engineering peer review report dated, you can fill in, June 14th, which is what we just reviewed. And you hereby attach it to the site plan approval as an addendum. The fifth one, prior to the issuance of the building permit, the applicant will provide to the board four paper copies of the revised plan incorporating the items that we just mentioned, those 12 items, starting with condition two, or comment two, the comment 44 of the Graves Engineering review. Six, the applicant will comply with the requirements of the site plan construction inspection schedule that Graves will provide to them at the pre-construction meeting. And again, for Damian's clarification, McClure knows this, Michael will hand out a construction schedule of what stages during field construction. Mike comes back for an inspection, you know, parking lot, drainage, that's awesome. Seventh, the planning board notes that the project requires a driveway permit from the Mass Department of Transportation, DOT District 3 office because of its access from Route 20. And the planning board for every project along the Route 20 corridor provides a copy of this permit to DOT, they're CC'd on this. And any modifications to the site plan approval that DOT requires as part of their driveway permit issuance will be reviewed by the planning board at a duly posted board meeting and accepted as a field modification. That way, we're memorializing, we don't need another public hearing. We recently did one, as you know, for the Charlton Orchard site plan for the commercial energy. DOT required them to modify, to some degree, the intersection with the driveway, and it came back to us as an agenda item that you just approved as a field modification because DOT requested it. Seventh, we get into just site landscaping performance guarantee. Prior to issuing a certificate of occupancy or operation for the project when they're done with the building and the parking lot, the site landscaping has to be completed by the applicant and inspected by Graves Engineering. The applicant also has to provide us with a 12-month landscaping performance guarantee to guarantee survivability and livability of the landscaping. In an amount determined by Graves Engineering, the performance guarantee is accepted by the planning board when they review it at a board meeting, and then I can notify the building commissioner. Ninth, gets into weather with landscaping. Sometimes people are ready to operate, and we live in New England, it's the wrong time of year to finish the landscaping. So we have a condition that if seasonal weather conditions are not conducive to putting in the landscaping at the time everything else is done, then the applicant can provide us with a performance guarantee from that time period to when the weather's better. And that way, we're holding it. We do it on many projects, as you know, say it's late fall or winter and they're ready to open. Doesn't make sense to do the landscaping then. Give us a performance guarantee taking us to the spring, and then you install it at that point. And 10 is our cross-reference. Whenever we have a site plan and a special permit, or a definitive subdivision in a special permit, we use this condition that the planning board notes, this project requires both the site plan and the BEP special permit. So all conditions of this site plan approval and the required special permit are hereby cross-referenced and shall comply. So that way, we're not getting into any conflicts of one permit, you know, is issued and the other one doesn't reference things. So that's the draft for the conditions for the administrative site plan. And in a few moments, I can give you the draft for the special permit, which also has the cross-reference condition in it too, so they're both interconnected. Would you like to answer any questions if you wish?
Do you have a motion to accept the site plan approval with the conditions that were read by Allen on the draft?
So moved.
Second.
All votes in favor?
Aye.
Thank you, Mr. Jim. For the special permit, here's the draft, and one for Jane. One for Deb, and if you could pass these, three, Deb, to your right. It follows the special permit format that you use for this type of project and other special permits. If I can briefly walk you through it. The initial identification information is in the draft at the top of page one, and at the very bottom, special permits in Charlton, we have a brief procedural history, which mentions the date when the application came in, the plan on file. It was revised through June 6th, and the planning board opened the hearing on May 18th and continued it to this evening, June 15th. Then we get into findings of fact, and there are four draft findings in this. The first is that the special permit meets the requirements of three sections of the zoning bylaw pertaining to a flexible business development special permit. Secondly, it memorializes that one of the findings of fact that justifies why you're approving it, that it will preserve approximately 25% of the land as permanently protected open space, about 17 acres of about 68 acres. Third, that it's superior to a conventional BEP development plan because it preserves a significant amount of usable open space in balance with the site development. And fourth, that the flexible development as proposed meets the goals, objectives, and recommendations of two sections of the 2000 Charlton master plan. So it's, you're implementing your comprehensive planning. Section four for economic development, and section six, open space in recreation, but not on recreation. That's just the title of section. It meets the requirements and the recommendations of open space. There are elements in the master plan that refer to balancing site development with open space, and this is an excellent example of that. Then we get into the actual proposed conditions, and there are six of them. The first one is what Attorney Bobowski and I discussed prior to when he presented tonight, that prior to the issuance of the occupancy permit, the restrictive covenants will be fully executed by the LLC, recorded at the Worcester District Registry of Deeds, and we'll receive documentation of the recording that we can share with the building commissioner. Second, you have a standard condition in special permits that if a proposed revision to the approved permit is a substantial change, then a public hearing would be held. But we have to have a substantial change, something very significant. Third, that all provisions of the Charlton zoning bylaw are adhered to. Fourth is the cross-reference I mentioned as condition 10 in the site plan, same thing, condition four. You note that this project requires administrative site plan approval, and all conditions of both permits are cross-referenced. Fifth, the special permit will become active and valid when the applicant records it at the Worcester District Registry of Deeds, and they provide us with documentation, us and the building commissioner. And that's, we do that with every special permit. The town clerk will certify after the appeal period that there was no appeal. They will take it to the W R D, W D R D, and they'll give us either a copy of it stamped or a receipt, and we'll share that with the building commissioner. And last, as I went over with Attorney Bobowski prior to this evening, when it comes to open space, we always have a condition that prior to the certificate of operation or occupancy, they install signage that identifies the location of the permanently protected open space. You can come back at some point on a planning board agenda with a design of what you want to do for signage. The board goes over the signage, where they're proposing to locate it and what type of signage, and then the board just agrees that evening, and then you just install it. So it's nothing, the specifics don't have to be finalized at this stage. And that's worked out very well, those steps on previous ones. Through the board, you don't have to get questions, but if there are, if you want to give an opportunity, you can. I know it's a special permit and I have no problem giving an opportunity to the applicant's reps if you have a question directly to them or you want them to comment.
May I?
I would like to see a reference to the waiver that we discussed a minute ago on the 50-foot buffer.
Good point. I'd like you to brought that up.
I have something written, if I might offer it as a suggestion.
Sure.
You could probably put it in number three, all applicable provisions of the bylaw shall be adhered to, and then just put, however, as allowed by section 5.14.5.6, the waiver has been granted for a buffer width of 50 feet along the Kozowski property line because a smaller buffer will suffice to accomplish the objectives of this section, which is the standard that's in the waiver.
Thank you. I think that makes a lot of sense. I'll memorialize it, we're in good shape.
Yeah.
All right, this time we're going to open it to the public for any comments. And then, I'd like to make a motion for a special permit decision for the, for the conditions of the draft as read by Allen, and also to add to, third one, the amendment to the 50-foot buffer, as read by Attorney Bobowski. Got a motion?
So moved.
All votes in favor?
Aye.
I'm ready this up, so I can just.
Thank you, that'll be helpful. Jane and I will finalize the actual two permits tomorrow. We'll file with the clerk tomorrow, we'll get it out. Applicant, engineer, and attorney will receive certified copies. And we'll just take it from there. Again, I want to thank McClure Engineering. I mean, it's, this is a very large project. They handled in a very expedited period of time and worked, put a lot of resources into this, and it's, Graves Engineering and I appreciate it very much.
And we want to thank the board for its expeditious review of this proposal. I think this is going to be great for the town, and we really thank you for helping this process.
On the Apple Tree House, I'd say thank you guys very much, very excited.
You're welcome.
So are we.
Can't wait to get going.
One point about timing. During the appeal period, you can get into certain levels of site preparation that you may not have done yet. Just double-check with Todd in terms of conservation differences and all. And second of all, during the appeal period, you can start working with the building commissioner, both meeting with him on the building permit application and putting it together and even submitting it. He just can't process it during the appeal period, but that's a regular policy of his. So I just thought I'd repeat it. Excellent.
Good, good luck reading my writing.
I know. We may be calling you in the morning.
Get it off tape, you can rewind it. Thank you.
So you will not visit tomorrow morning, you and I go over it.
Thanks. Would it be appropriate for me to do the room for a minute just to ask this by law for your question?
Sure.
Thanks so much, everybody. Good night.
Can you hang on the hall for one minute?
Sure.
It's a van for any, like, crazy, crazy, I don't have a car, so I have to make sure I call a jack to come pick me out after, because they're, we're leaving for, we're leaving for Florida on Saturday, but it's small. It doesn't have an inspection sticker because they can't fix something with the engine light. It's been there four times.
That's the worst.
Then they'll like take it.
I bought new sneakers, and every time I buy new shoes.
And, and I've been driving a little bit. Last week I went away.
It's the same thing.
We leave on Saturday.
I wore it two days in a row. Yeah, and it's the same thing. These are the old ones.
I mean, it's a Massachusetts thing, but if I'm in like.
Oh, the Jell-O inserts.
You don't want to get towed. No, no, family vacation.
Well, because, because of the dealership not being able to fix the puddle. It's only two years old, there shouldn't be.
No, I know.
It's in a warranty still?
Check engines tough, like, okay.
I do, I have used inserts before from a doctor that's about $75, and they were pretty good, but I haven't used them. I usually use them on winter boots, but I don't use them on non-boots. Maybe tomorrow, even tonight, I'll put them in my sneaker.
I hear so many times, it's the cap.
I went Monday after work and going back Saturday morning, and I think I'll bring them and show the caravans.
And then work is just crazy.
All, but many of the sheriffs are for reelection, and now on the side, all of the.
When I was bent over, I couldn't straighten up 100 percent until Monday night. It's just muscular, it's strong. I've done it in the past, but not regularly. I have a great chiropractor, and she uses the activator, that's what I need. I need it. It's the way it works for me. But I have a little bit of.
But I have a little bit of soli...
I'm going on a schedule, like just ignore everything for like 12 days.
You need it.
That's the problem.
You need it.
And because I'm tall, I naturally...
It's not funny, but I think prison food is like 30 days now. I swear I'm like living in the...
She told me I had to practice switch hands.
It's actually, I have to say, everything's fresh and prepared, like local quality, like farmer's market food. Like, I have it very good.
Yeah, he's killing it.
I love them anyway. I just sent me to the warehouse.
Yeah. Good for them. They qualify.
All right. Is he still on camera or is he just...
Yep.
Okay. So you've got the eight o'clock, so the planning board, the subdivision instructions? Yes. George Curitz is the attorney for Blair Builders, and George called me a few weeks ago and then provided this. Give you a little background. It's routine paperwork, but give you the background. If you remember, Blair Builders was not the original developer. I forgot his name.
Yeah.
Charlton guy.
Oh, we had a poem developed, yeah.
Didn't he do work for Blair, or he owned a lumber company? He lived over there?
Was it Bob Williams?
I do think of Bob Williams.
I think I do.
Yeah. But when we approved the plan, you put a normal subdivision covenant in place, and then Blair came along a few years later, received ownership, and redesigned it and resubmitted to you. Then you put a fresh restriction in place. So a few years go by, Blair puts the road in and requests release of the covenant for bond, and that's where we are. Well, George was doing some research at the registry, getting ready to convey some lots, and found that when they asked for the restrictive covenant to be released several years ago, it was the second restrictive covenant. No one ever asked for release from the original one from the previous guy. So he did one based on that. So what we have is a release for the covenant that gets rid of that second restrictive covenant. There were two on the project, the original one and a revised one. So this, just, he just needs to get on record at the registry. We hold a bond on the remaining work to be done beyond the base code, and this would release lots one through seven from the second restrictive covenant that's sitting at the registry of days. That's what this is all about. So there is the standard sheet when you vote that each board member would sign. Jane will notarize it tomorrow. I'll do up the standard cover letter from the board chairman to Attorney Curitz saying that, you know, attached is the release, and he'll file it at the registry and give us documentation that he filed it.
Is the first covenant very similar to the second one?
Yes, the boilerplate. So we ended up with two restrictive covenants on record because that first guy filed when you approved it. And then Blair did a second one related to him as owner, and you only released one back in the day, so this releases the second one. The original covenant was never released. You released the second one that Blair gave us, but the original one from 2004 was not released, so this is releasing the 2004 one. We hold a bond with cash value amounts for the remaining work, so there's no need to hold it, you know.
So we still have...
We have coverage, 100% coverage with actual funding as insurance to complete the work.
Do you have a motion to accept the release of the covenant for the first holding, bond holder?
Second.
In favor?
I'll leave it with you because you'll take care of the notarizing, and then I'll do a cover letter. Keep this with us. There's a paperclip with this.
Just one. This one? This is one I just forgot about, it's from 2004.
Yeah, yeah. No one, you have to have an attorney request the release. We don't track those or do it for them, and he didn't, with the weird circumstances, he didn't realize that no one ever, from the previous owner, and then Blair didn't think that there was one, and he just found it in a recent search. Did you want me to hand it over? I just wanted to bring up one item, if you've got a second, on a different project, without naming the company because they haven't given us permission.
Sure.
But Attorney Bobowski is involved with that project that we'd be looking in the fall at town meeting for a zoning overlay modification. So what I was hoping is, at some point in August maybe, we do have an August planning board meeting.
Can you get my book?
Thank you. If he could get on the agenda with his client that night, and he'd have a draft, he's going to draft up the overlay proposal, and if we could meet that night, because then we can finalize by September and it can get on the warrant for October.
I'm devising my car, but I know, I know I'm only going away the, Saturday the 13th of August.
We're going to meet Wednesday, August 10th. Will that work for you?
I'll be here for that.
Okay. I can email you tomorrow?
That's fine. I'm sure it's open. I haven't booked anything in August except a trip to Poland with my children.
Sounds like a good one.
They need to learn about their culture. They think they're just America.
You've been there a few times.
Wonderful.
I've been to Krakow, so...
Mine was one of Roslaw. Obviously, you've been to Warsaw, but...
How do you pronounce it?
Roslaw?
Ah. That'll take some practice.
W-R-O-C-L-A-W is how you pronounce it. Roslaw. Beautiful, it's just the beautiful churches and definitely European.
My wife is Lithuanian, so we're actually flying to Vilnius, spending three days, and then taking another hop to Warsaw.
My mother's family was... My mother's family was from Vilnius. We got a track to the 1840s.
That'll be interesting.
They love America, and so love you.
Oh, they didn't crack up. So I'll put that in my book. Send me an email to remind me, and I'll see you in August. It's great to see you again.
Thank you so much. Ponican, we just have from Mike Mallett, the annual extension request, and he's requesting extending the approval of the definitive to July 7th, 2017. Script 16, by mistake. Thank you.
We have a request here from hometown bank for the planning board approval extension for Ponican Hill Estate. They'd like to have it extended to July 7th, 2017. Do you have a motion?
Second.
In favor?
Aye.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Moving right along. I wanted to spend a few minutes, Mass Smart Growth Alliance. I attended at the Worcester DCU Center on June 2nd, the annual Massachusetts Smart Growth Alliance Conference, and I wanted to go over a few items, I think of board interest. I wanted to hand out the actual conference program, one for Jane and four around. So you could see, this was really interesting. It was more of a national level conference. They brought in some heavy hitters. Former Maryland Governor Paris Glenn Denning in the 1990s, he invented smart growth. Everything we do in the village and all was his administration. He has become a national figure on this. He's received national awards. National Geographic did a smart growth piece on Maryland years ago. I have a copy at home. I'll bring it in if you'd like to see it. And they flew him in for this conference. He was one of two keynote speakers, and he was very good, along with another gentleman who, Dan Burden, who's based in California and is a consultant on smart growth. Lieutenant Governor Karen Polito spoke, Worcester City manager at Augustus, and a few other state officials. I went to two panels. In the morning, I went to one that was called, "What does your community want to be when it grows up?", which was perfect. Chris Ryan from CMRPC was one of the panelists, along with the city planner from Peabody and some state officials. And a lot of what we're doing, they talked about. They really keyed in on if you have a suburban community with the type of character of Charlton, a village district. And Chris talked quite a bit about village districts and how only a handful of central mass communities have done that. But that was very worthwhile. And then in the afternoon, and they got the time wrong on it, it was an afternoon panel, even though it says morning, "Beyond sprawl are the new models for suburban and small-town smart growth." And again, a lot of what we're doing is what they talked about. The types of projects we're doing, mixed use, like the one you approved tonight, open space combined with economic development. I'd say there were about 300 people there. It was pretty good in that respect. But they also, Lieutenant Governor Polito, in her remarks, gave an update on the Zoning Reform Act. And just to refresh your memory, about eight or nine years ago, the planning community of Massachusetts started a legislative push to do the first update to the State Zoning Act since the 1960s, and every year it gets closer and closer. And Lieutenant Governor Polito felt that in this session, it is going to get approved. That was her opinion. I think it's crossed. And in the telegram the other day, it did get voted out of Senate Committee, which we've never gotten that far, and it's heading for the House in the next few weeks. What I wanted to do... Get with me for one minute. Got so much paperwork tonight. We put it in your packet. I just wanted to point out, it's called Senate Bill 2144, this particular version of it. And this handout that they gave us at the conference during her remarks, I put it in your packet, and I wanted to point out a couple of things in it. Some of it is just justifying how they think it will help, but a few things that would be relevant to the Charlton Planning Board. As you know, tonight, special permits require a super majority. You need four out of five people to vote on a special permit. It would expedite and make it easier. It would cut it down to the normal majority, similar to site plan review. So if this passes, then site plant, special permits would need three people to vote. There are several variance reforms related to the zoning board of appeals. I don't have it in front of me. I don't need to go into that. Certain things that we do in Charlton, other communities don't allow, and it would, it would allow and mandate that you have to allow accessory apartments in your community. There are communities that don't allow accessory apartments at all. We do. But it would open that door. And there are still communities that do not allow multifamily, beyond single-family and duplex, and it would require them to amend their zoning at some point to add some multifamily in the community. The two items that it would also do if approved in the next month, that this board has talked about extensively, and you've written letters of support in the past. The first one relates to ANRs. As you know, Massachusetts is the only state in the country that has such an open-ended ANR process that anything of any size, number of lots, along a road on your official map, you sign the ANR and you can't require them to deal with a drainage problem in the road or add a sidewalk or add street lighting. So that was a major sticking point and opposition from various realty groups and developer groups in the state, but now they're on board because they evolved it and changed it. The idea is, instead of dropping ANRs entirely, you would still have ANRs, but you could create a category called minor subdivision, that if an ANR is over a certain number, and I don't have it in front of me, but I think it's five or six. So if an ANR came in that was five or six, instead of applying for a form ANR, they would fill out a form that we would call minor subdivision. You would not need a public hearing. It's still, it's a hybrid, and it's a category of ANR called minor subdivision that prior to signing the ANR, if the planning board finds that there's a drainage problem in the road or looking for a sidewalk, then the board can enter into an agreement with the applicant to require them to do that prior to signing the ANR of getting the agreement, prior to getting the occupancy for the house of fixing the drainage problem on the sidewalk. It's a compromise that I think is very good among three entities, realty associations, home builder associations, and planners, and it evolved through these various attempts over the past seven or eight years to that point. The other thing they did that was very palatable and really put it over the top is, there was still a lot of opposition in the realty and developer associations to pass it in a way that it becomes law automatically. So there's a provision now that it's, it's a home rule option. Each planning board in each community has to decide whether they want to adopt that in their planning and subdivision, Chapter 41 rules and regs. So hypothetically, you may want to do that. Hypothetically, Dudley may not want to do it, and they don't have to. So that, the Realtors and Home Builders Association liked the fact that it left it up to community preference, planning board, Chapter 41 type of stuff. And last, in some form, it would give authorization to impact fees, impact fee regulations that would allow zoning bylaws to be crafted and adopted in towns and cities that for off-site impacts, physical traffic, drainage, that type of thing, you could require developers, applicants to pay a fair share to solve a problem that their project is directly affecting, such as drainage or traffic, that type of thing. Those are the highlights of it. There are other pieces of it, but I'm going to keep on top of it week to week, along with other planners, because it's hitting the floor of the state legislature. And again, the lieutenant governor at the conference said that she felt confident that it was progressing in a way that was meeting all these interests, and also that it looks like there's a very, very strong possibility that the legislature will send the bill to the governor for signing.
How many times is it, this isn't the first time that they...
It's the first time it got this far.
Right.
I would say it's been introduced into the Senate or the House. This year, it was introduced on the Senate side to initiate it, probably for anywhere from eight to 10 years in a row, and it evolved. I remember we had a meeting at Central Mass Regional Planning in which the American Planning Association and the Mass Association of Home Builders, we all met for an afternoon. That was about seven or eight years ago. Lenny Gendel from Rutland was appointed by the Central Mass Home Builders to be the lead home builder at that meeting, and Larry Adams from Central Mass was the lead, and it evolved to a different point. But it's now evolved to a version that seems approvable and meets Realtor, developer, planner parties. Again, maybe it'll go off-rail in the next month. No guarantees, but people are publicly saying it looks like we're there, so we'll see what happens.
Did Crystal Carnegie speak?
Crystal, have you met her?
Yes.
Yeah, she's a character.
Yes.
Yeah. She was very, very interesting. It was, it was very unique. It woke people up.
Yes, her undersecretary do.
Yeah.
She was at our conference in May, and she was...
Yeah.
She's quite different than any other undersecretary we've had.
Yeah. She's a breath of fresh air in a different direction. Yeah. Very interesting.
Oh, yeah.
You have to give the governor a lot of credit for bringing in someone with that perspective and that style.
Unfortunately, she doesn't like house authorities.
Really?
Really.
She was supportive of the traditional type of planning stuff. She's in that camp about regionalizing the authorities?
Yeah.
Which I don't think is a good idea. Do you think that will happen?
Eventually. I mean, this is what, the third time now we've seen it come around where, you know, they keep trying it and trying it and putting a different quest on it and trying it. Like the other thing, sometime it's going to happen where everything aligns and, yes, they're going to do away with us, but not right now.
Oh, no problem. Yeah, we got the tape. Yeah. Thanks.
Yep.
Do you want to, I want the affordable housing project? Yes, for a few moments, Gene and I, a couple items, very briefly, Mr. Chairman. On the two projects, first, the Meadowview Drive path grant application, as you know, is in for the market analysis, and we put in your packet a support letter from Senator Gobi that went to Mass DHC Day. And we requested one also from Representative Durant, and hopefully that'll be forthcoming. If you want to follow up and add a housing authority support letter?
Yes.
Yep, that would be great. And shifting over to the Bay Path project, the consultant, Bill Scanlon, has given Gene, myself, and Mike Andre the final draft. The consultant, Bill Scanlon, has given Jean, myself, and Mike Andre the final draft, and we'll review it. And once it becomes a final, final draft, I'd like to give it to the board prior to your next meeting. And then if we could spend a few minutes on it at the next meeting, I think we're in great shape. And the last task for meetings with, on the project, is heading for an agenda with the housing authority in one of their afternoon meetings, the way that we've met twice on the planning board. So we're at the tail end of all of that. One of the final tasks recently was, if you remember, part of the grant funding was for the attorney for Bay Path Voc Ed School District to review the deed and see if there are any restrictions, and if there's any procedure of, if they want to move forward on the project in the future, how to convey the land. So we just got that the other day from their attorney, and two things. One, no particular restrictions that are unusual or specific. And two, he's just pointing out, and I'll forward it, forward it to you tomorrow, that the legal process down the line, should they be willing to move forward on the project, is they would have to file what they call special legislation, which is a home rule petition, to request the legislature to let them, as a school district, convey acreage to the housing authority. I mentioned to John LaFlesch that when I worked for Worcester, I remember the same thing happened regarding the Worcester Voc Ed School because that was Green Hill Park, or piece of Green Hill Park. So the city had their state reps submit the special legislation. They took some acreage out of Green Hill Park, and they did a double petition to put some unprotected acreage into Green Hill Park. So it just lays out all of that. And then John said that, when he forwarded it to me, that it's something that we could discuss in the fall with him and his committee. I told him I'd like to obviously have a conversation over the summer about it, but, so that piece of the pie is falling into place. And that's where we are on the project. So the month of June, we're really finishing it all up. And then if I could spend a few minutes with you going over the final version, on July thirteenth, we're in good shape.
Who was going to be at that meeting that the housing authority?
I'll definitely be there, but I'll call Bill tomorrow and see if he's available.
Okay.
Because as the consultant, if he can't make it, I could always handle it, but it would be nice. And I know he'd like to be there, too.
And my board knows him, so.
Yeah, that helps. Fantastic. The other thing is, it's always got to go to these conferences to, you know, connect with people you're working with. And Kelly Arvidson from Mass Development, who is the person we're working on our financing for Meadowview expansion across the street, was at the conference. And we had an impromptu forty-five-minute meeting on the project. So she was thrilled that we're seeking path grant funding for the market analysis, and that gets it back on track with the agency. So she worked with me last week to set up a meeting in Charlton, a working meeting at the housing authority with Jean, myself, the consultants in July, Southridge Savings Bank, which would be the local financing entity with Mass Development, and her staff. So about eight of us will meet in July, and hopefully that'll really move us to stepping into their application process for the actual money to expand over them. So that's where we are on both of those projects.
Do you want to move on to both management?
Sure. The only thing I really have there briefly tonight is just that, again, we're just waiting for the industrial park revision to come in from Burton Engineering. We got the two projects we continue beyond tonight. The mini golf is open.
Yep.
And I know that he's getting, hopefully in the near future, getting some good media coverage. The last thing on the growth management I just want to mention is, I was speaking with some staff at CMRPC the other day, and the Chamber of Commerce in Worcester and CMRPC in partnership are going to revitalize this summer and fall and reopen the CEDS process, C E D S. It's been dead for a couple of years. And I think that could be important for us on Route twenty as time goes by. Just to refresh your memory, CEDS is a federal program through federal E D A that provides millions of dollars if a large project comes along at a site that you designated and the Fed's certified as CEDS eligible. Then you can apply through the Regional Planning Agency to the Feds for infrastructure money, whether it's roads, drainage, water, sewage. But the project has to be fully approved and got all its permits, and then ready to go. Five of our large sites on Route twenty are CEDS approved. But two years ago, the Regional Planning Agency did not keep up the annual CEDS certification, and it died. It's been a staffing issue of lack of staff time. So sometimes the Chamber of Commerce has taken the lead with the regional agency helping them, and sometimes vice versa. They told me a few weeks ago that Tim Murray, as the director of the chamber, has agreed to assign his staff and take on the time and effort and the cost, which is a good thing, of revitalizing CEDS. So I've been on the CEDS committee for several years. I'll go to the first meeting when it pops up this summer or fall, and I'll report to the board. And if CEDS gets back up to date when one of these five sites, the two sites behind you, the Kozowski site, the Gardner site, two of the Proudie Glickman sites, and I believe our last one is, I think it's the Ralph Nichols site, but Ralph, I don't know if, that's an interesting point. I'm pretty sure the fifth one is Ralph's site. And given where he is, if CEDS gets revived time-wise, he might be eligible for some site work money. I'll double-check on that and let you know and let Ralph know if it triggers some possibility of that. I just have my last few grocery list items.
Yeah.
All set. We did a bunch of them before, but a few of them that's left. I've got the latest update from Graves on just the project status sheet for the sites that they're managing, field inspections on planning board permits. It's dated June fourteen.
Key point for Jane?
Yep. I'll put one right here for her. I covered everything else earlier in the meeting. Thank you. That was my last item.
All right.
All right. I know we've got a few minutes to go through. Do you want to take the time and go through a couple of them?
Sure.
Take a minute and we'll go through the April sixth, two thousand sixteen.
Make a motion to approve the April sixth minutes as presented.
I gotta fix.
The other page?
Shouldn't the seven thirty-five be Prince Road reduced from each?
I'll note it for Jane. April sixth, what page, or something?
Just second page. The seven thirty-five P M. Should be Prince Road, that was the one that floor engineer had. Because when you turn to the top of page three, it says Prince Road extension reduced lot. Special permit condition.
Making an exception for her?
Sure. What, I'm sorry, where exactly should I make a change?
Just in the title. Besides being Harrington Road, it should be Prince Road.
Oh, okay, sure. No problem.
Oh wait, no, is that, was that the last name of the applicant?
Yeah, but you're right. It should start with that.
Okay, all right.
Why don't I adjust it for that?
Because I know that Pot Harrington Road is in Charlton and Southridge.
Yeah, that could be confusing. So we change it to Prince Road Special Permit Application, and it'll say in the body of the minutes, the applicant's name.
Yeah, okay, all right.
No problem.
Would the correction be made? Do you have a motion to accept it as?
Yep. Some more.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Can we read the May, April twentieth? Do you have a motion, any discussion for the April twentieth draft meeting?
I make a motion to accept them as presented?
Yes, we'll move.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Can we take the time to read the May fourth? Do you want to go into a specific session to read the?
Do it another time. It's just social minor.
Yep.
Mm-hmm. Savings another night if you feel like doing it.
Yep. Do I have any discussion for the May fourth draft?
Yeah.
Public care? I mean, no. Minutes? Do I have a motion to accept the May fourth draft as written?
Some more.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
I understand. I listen here for the actual moving part of it.
Not private care.
Human light.
Thank you. Do you have any other thing, any board member would like to discuss? Both can I? Motion to adjourn.
Second.